How are you doing? I don't think it's gonna warm up out there, this is pretty cold. Well, having to switch jackets and walk all the way downtown first. I'm not used to this non-performance wear.
You know, it's really, it's really happy application.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I still make sure.
All right, thanks everyone for being here. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So let's do a quick review of the agenda. We're gonna talk about the ADA voting system replacement. We have a discussion about the capital expenditure reimbursement resolution. And update on the East Asheville Library. Discussion of a potential solar site. Update on the Radtip Connector donation and inter-local agreement. And have a discussion about our boards and commissions policy. And with all of our pre-meetings, we're not gonna vote on any of this, we've just got some discussion about today. Are there any other topics that any commissioners want to place on the agenda for our pre-meetings? All right, thanks, because we follow the agenda as we outlined here. So, to kick us off. Is the ADA voting system replacement express vote, and Joyce Cannabel is here to talk to us about that item.
And for the record, it's Cannabel. I'm interim director in replacing Trina Velez as she has moved on to the state board. And so we just wanted to update you from the letter we had, our board had written to you on September 25th. About that the state board had now certified additional equipment. And that there was going to be demonstration of all three companies. And that counties could test equipment. And so, we, what we tested and what our board went and saw in Haywood County was the express vote machine, which is an ADA marking device that would replace our current auto marks that we've had since 2006. And the, we tested it in the municipal election for Whitman and Lieberville in all 12 precincts. And it was successful. And so, the board of elections voted on November 17 to continue with the purchase upgrade. And we have had, in the past, in the capital projects fund, 400,000 that you have set aside in past years. Actually, the state board was slow in getting the machine certified. But we have gotten a bid from the North Carolina vendor, Printelect. They're the vendor for ESNS out of Omaha. And our bid is below that 400,000. It's 372,100. And so, we would like to move ahead and make this purchase for 2020 elections. Any questions?
Does it look like there's any at this time? All right, thank you very much for the interview. Very good. All right, next up, Don Warren is gonna talk to us about the resole expenditure reimbursement.
Good afternoon.
One second.
All right. Anyways, so we're gonna start about the reimbursement resolution. You have seen this in the past, well, some of you have seen it in the past, it's been brought up. So, what is reimbursement resolution? Well, it allows us to spend funds that we have today and then being reimbursed from debt issuance in the future. If we don't do this, if we spend any money on debt-related projects, we will be out that money, that we sunk costs, so we need to make sure we're doing this. It also allows us, I shouldn't say allows, but it makes the LGC happy. If we have, if we go about it this method, because then we've got contracts at hand, we've got the bids, everything's running, they're legitimate projects, that sort of thing. The LGC likes to see that before they approve your debt issuances. So, this is a common practice, most entities, you guys have done it here in the past. The question that I have for y'all is, moving forward, we can either go about bringing a reimbursement resolution every time we do this, or you can delegate the authority to me, the finance director, to basically do that, and then I can report to you on a quarterly basis if we actually do one. So I just want direction on which resolution I should bring to you on the 17th for your consideration. And also answer any questions about reimbursement resolution, if you have any.
So the only comment I got is that, you know, this is a, this is a common practice. It is required, has to be done, and it doesn't have to come to us.
It doesn't have to, that's what I'm saying, you can delegate that authority to me, I can do the resolution. And then I would come to you on a quarterly basis and say, this is the reimbursement resolution we did. I'm still required to report back to you that we did something, so. It's just a matter of if you wanna go through formality of seeing this in the future and then voting on it and approving it, or if you just want me to report back.
You know, I'll just weigh in. You know, one option, it's kind of the in-between, is to, you know, have an approach where we would say, let's just put it on the consent agenda, so it is approved, but we don't, you know, kind of burn a lot of time in our regular staff meetings when we're at a lot of other competing needs that really usually need a lot of deliberation, so that might be one way to have the board approve it, if there's any questions, people can raise them, but I'm open to different ideas, I don't have strong feelings about it.
I don't either, but that's not bad.
All right.
Consent?
All right, I like that idea too. Think about it, you know, keep us posted on what your thoughts are.
Hearing no real preference, this will be, I'll put this on consent for the 17th, and you all wanna pull it off and discuss it, we can always do that.
Yeah, maybe eventually we'll see this enough that people just say, we don't even, you know, it's fine to just report it. But for now, maybe that's a good place to keep it for a while.
That works for me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Okay. East Asheville Library, we have Jim Lynn and Mike Mace are also, double teams, maybe?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we've received the final cost estimates on the East Asheville Library, and are here to present those details and see guidance on moving forward. I'll discuss the finer details on the construction bid in just a moment, but first I want to give you a summary of the amounts. The budgeted amount for the project is $5,800,000, and our obligations to date are 489,514, and those include architect, engineer, and free construction fees to date. That leaves our remaining budget for construction of $5,310,486. And our construction bid total, which we received, is $6,487,952, which leaves a variance of $1,177,466. Below, you'll see we've listed some of the major variances for the project, which includes site development, finished carpentry and casework, glassing, glazing, HVAC, demolition and abatement on landscaping. A major driver for those were construction cost increases since the project was really given an estimate. And those that I've just listed there at the bottom alone total 681,472 dollars.
Can you back up?
Sure.
I do have a question on that.
Yes.
So you're saying that, so we spent 489 on planning and development today, those are sort of, sorry, next year. Those are the sort of sunk costs we have in the planning and development of the project to date, and then the the original budget amount, the hope is that it would come in at 5.8 million or less
Correct.
for investments to date and all remaining costs.
That's right.
Okay, so make sure I'm into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what was the original, the original budget? Was, is the 5.8, wasn't it an increase?
Yes.
From the number before?
Yes, I think it was 4.3, or 4.5, sorry, it's 1.3 was the additional item, that's right.
So you're going from 4.1, not you, but
Right.
The original estimate is going from 4.3, which was given to us when? If you don't have that information, you get back to us. We never that amount. 4.5, thank you, 4.5, 5.8, now we're on 6.4.
Is there word?
No, there's, I'm sorry, I said wait, yeah, there is, I didn't have to have more questions, I'm sorry. To break down the bid details further, the core bid is 5,944,431, which doesn't include costs, as I list there, the fixtures, furniture, and equipment is 325,000. The playground costs, and the crosswalk costs, and the basketball court costs, you may recall, those are part of the lease conditions, and those costs are outlined there. The playground costs were $70,000, but we also have the matching grant that Parks and Recreation obtained for $35,000. Then we also have listed there optional alternates, and those items are items that really improve the look and feel of the building, they aren't essential to have a functional building, I'll outline those in just a minute, but those totaled $223,000 at $2,482. And then General Services has value engineered some elements of the project to reduce the cost by $223,544. And that gives you your project total of $6,487,952.
What were the optional alternates?
I'm gonna go into those, I'll show you those towards the end. To break down the value of engineering highlights, these will be, since there's some other things that they, they value engineered in the project. One of the things I want to highlight on here, though, is the Japanese maple relocation, I don't know if that's been talked about with you before, but there's a tree on the property that is, has some sentimental value, and the community was very adamant that that be preserved. But that was a very significant cost, obviously you can see $30,000 to do that, and that was, just something to highlight to you, because that is something that is important to them, that is retained on the property, so. But it was our number two highest cost in that value engineering effort. The alternate cost, which I mentioned, the 223,000 dollars. Sure. The alternate costs again, these are items that really improve the look and feel of the building. I'll just kind of go in order of the things that are listed there. The operable wall, that's a partition in the meeting room, which splits the room into two and allows for smaller meetings to take place. The wood trim, that is a feature in the interior of the building, which basically creates a warmer feel to the building, and it was something that was consistent with the look and feel of our other branches, and also that the community desired. The sun shade, which is on the exterior of the building, actually, on the right, that provides reduction of glare in the reading room, and also just kind of provides more visual appeal from the street. Then the trellis in the courtyard, those again are optional items that just really improve the looking feel and experience of the building, particularly the courtyard, because the library would be a destination space, and we have the park feature, and the courtyard really is important too, for people to come and spend time and enjoy the library, so. Those items, I think, really add essential character to the building, I think if you remove those, it will really alter the feel of the building, but they are things that could be removed, we still have functionality. Another thing to highlight to you, that's come up, that we need to know. As you know, General Services is planning to release an RFQ for a comprehensive facility study for the county, and that will of course include the library as an option, which would also include East Asheville Library. What we don't know, of course, is what that study might find. It could find that we're on target with our current design, but it also could determine that there are opportunities and needs not captured in the existing design. And we wouldn't know that, of course, until the study's underway and we're underway on construction. So that's something to be considered. If we were to consider deferring until that study is complete, the values that could arise from that, we could understand the space needs, of course, across the system, save and commit current funding to meet the future needs of the East Asheville Library, and also the design could be enhanced based on those findings related to programmatic elements. The risks, however, are that there could be construction cost escalation, in fact, I'd say that's a certainty, given what we've seen so far with our current experience. But we would also forfeit the matching grant for the playground equipment, and there'd also, of course, be additional time and resources required to reopen the project in the future day, but this is something that is certainly something for you to be aware of, that if that effort proceeds with the master facilities plan, it would speak to the East Asheville Library at some point along the way. So with that in mind, we're requesting your direction on how to proceed, whether we should move forward with the current project and approve the additional funding to complete the project at $1,977,466, or delay the project to the pending completion of the comprehensive facility study.
All right, thank you.
Brownie? Maybe it's self-evident, but I'd love to just talk about it, it seems like you've kind of gone through and taken out any elements of the project that might have been more aesthetic, or
With the alternating?
Yes, yeah. What, what would it mean to ta-
No, both were taken out. Those are more than Those are included in that total cost. They're broken out, but they are included in that total cost, so there's
So that final number you
That's everything, that's all in.
That would include all those features, so that's correct. That's what we're taking as well.
Oh.
We could take that.
So if we were to start removing some of those, it would reduce the one
Right, that's right.
Well, then I'm glad I, from this issue. Well, I guess I'd like to dive in and talk about some of that, I mean, I think, you know, these are hard, hard calls for the such an important project, that there's such community support around, and also, we've certainly seen the costs swell. So I'd like to kind of hear folks' thoughts on how we might proceed.
Well, one of the concerns I had is we put it off. You know, I remember this was one of the first meetings I attended three years ago when I became a commissioner, and the people in East Asheville had been complaining for years how we've put off doing something to the library. And I was really shocked when I went through it, because I saw, for most instances, the same thing that I saw when I became a branch manager at East Asheville, and we'd go up there and read the Wall Street Journal in the 70s, nothing has changed. But, you know, I have a concern, because if we put this off, you know, how long are we talking about? What's gonna happen as far as the cost, the escalation, and all? To me, it would be a nightmare for us, I have a problem with that, just as far as really making the best use of the taxpayers' money, to be honest with you, the funds. Because I don't think at this point in time, we can afford to put it off, it's not gonna be fair to the people out there, and from what I see, it's fine, and, you know, if we get any kind of plan that's worth a darn, I don't think we'd be that far off from it. But to me, I think we should move on ahead with what we have here, and let's go. Because if you talk about doing that plan, how long will that take? How long is that gonna push it forward?
Six months.
Ah, you know, we could fit and follow it around, no, I have a problem with that.
Okay, questions, comments?
Hey, I feel a little, I feel a little bit helpless. I feel like I'm in a really difficult position. We've got an original estimate that started at 4.5. We all wrapped her, I mean, we all got excited about making the changes, we wanted community input, and our expectations was 5.8 billion. So I really don't know what happened. One, and it's one point, it's coming in now, it's, bring the, bring the first, bring the first slide back up.
At this point, do you have your mind? So, so I think it was, we got the, the last estimate, which was an increase from the previous estimate.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. George Wood was still
Right.
He was in there when those numbers came in.
Right.
So what were those numbers, like, how did that number, there wasn't, there wasn't like a real bid, like, companies didn't put in actual bids, right? So that was an estimate, how did that number arrive at?
I wasn't here during that time, so going back and doing some research.
Right.
It looks like there was some kind of design developments, you know, start out at a 10,000 square foot building, went to a 12,000 square foot building, to a 15,000 square foot building. Now where it is, it's 13,000 square foot. So if you're, you're reading estimates out there based on different square footage, makes a huge difference.
Of course, but I think, I think, like, my recollection is that when George was here, we did get kind of a final, I think that this, the design of it was, had been finalized, and we got a, a number that, it was higher than what we were expecting, so.
And we approved that.
And we did, we thought, we kind of, we're poised to have a similar discussion of do we need to make some design changes or things like that, and I think everyone said, we need to just move ahead with this, so. I guess we're just trying to understand, what, how was that number derived, because it, I'm assuming that the numbers you have now, but correct me if this isn't right, is it based on a real bid from a real company, or is it still an estimate?
31 bid packages, three per bid package.
Oh, good.
So this is the low, this is the low bid from a
So can we go to the other slide real quick? So I wanna point out what you're talking about, Brownie, because that slide tells you the construction bid is 5.9. So if you're looking at 5.8 versus 5.9, you're about $100,000 off. What was not added, if you look at the furniture and fixtures, then we had a lease with the City of Asheville, and they brought in the playground costs that needed to be done, the crosswalk, the basketball court. Those were because we're billing on the city side, and they said those improvements needed to be made, so those are additional costs that were not part of anything that Georgia had at that time.
Including the furniture and fixtures and all of that, it was just the physical structure.
Construction, correct.
So why would we Why would we not have had a conversation about fixtures, furniture, equipment? I mean, it would've been our assumption, my assumption, that if we, if we were replacing those, that that would be in the 5.8. So if, you know, to the county manager's, you know, point, which, thank you for bringing that slide up, bid the 5.94 million. If we were planning on doing fixtures and furniture and equipment, that would have been in that. I understand getting bumped by the city with additional requirements, but that may, or, I mean, we, we should have known that going in, but we may not have, for sure. Well, I'm sure we did.
I do know, like, for site development, that was one of the bigger packages that came in, and it's $281,000 difference between seven months ago and today's date. And that's the low bid, and the high bid, if we'd had to use it, we'd have put it up another 600,000, so.
Yeah, there's a lot.
I don't know, you know, back in, what is initially thought about, if it was closer to the building, now it's been pushed back from the building, there's a lot of grading, you know, there's a lot, there's 50 some parking places there, and
Why didn't we push it back?
I can't answer that question.
I mean, if we're making changes to the original bid, it'd be good to know why. I mean, is it because? Because we can't, I mean
I would present it probably as a good parking, that would be my guess, but I don't know for sure.
That would be my guess, but I don't know for sure.
Did I interrupt you, County Manager? I'm sorry.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong. This bid that we just got, the bids we put out, that was the first... This is the first bids we've had. Before, we were just working on estimates, right? Yeah.
If that's the case, you better get better at your questions.
That's one other question. Commissioner, can you remind us, what's the county's plan for, regardless of exactly where we land on the final numbers, what's the plan for financing of the project?
Originally, we had planned on borrowing some of the money and using some fund balance for the difference. If we move forward tonight, our... Well, next meeting when you vote, our proposal coming to you next would be to finance the entire cost, so you would not be dipping into fund balance for that $1 million. It would be just financed at all at the 6.8.
And would this be on a standalone financing basis, or is it going to get folded in to some other projects as well?
It'll be folded in, but it'll be folded in with the others.
All right.
So is there any... Is there anything that... Is there any way to reduce the cost?
That would be the value engineering piece of the 200,000, which, to Jasmine's point, was the aesthetics that the community really asked to be on the site.
But it still includes the optional alternatives.
So you could remove that, the alternatives, that...
Can you bring those up?
Sure.
We have already reduced the 223. That happens to be the same number, but those are the value engineering pieces. We can do an add of 223 in the alternate cost, but that was the aesthetics of the... Let's do your look.
And in terms of the... I mean, my predisposition is to not, you know, delay it, but just in terms of this idea, the idea of the facility study, is part of the thinking there that, because it sounded like that might actually result in a more expansive project, not a less expansive, right? It was not...
No, no, you would predict that if you do that, you're not going to reduce any costs. You're looking at something potentially more substantial.
Would that be the cost of potentially, you know, consolidating here as opposed to the number we manage now? So if this project gets more expensive, will we save some money elsewhere? Or what's the...
That's potential. That could come as a result of the study. I can tell you from vast experience, that type of thing does happen when you do studies. They'll look at your geographic placement of buildings, your square footage, determine what makes the most sense in terms of reaching the most people, and most... So those types of things do come in those studies, yeah.
Well, I'm in favor of moving ahead. My only question would be, do we say, hey, I mean, I'm not saying don't do any of these things, but do we say try to find some savings, you know, somewhere? That's kind of... It doesn't, you know, as a... In the totality, it won't be a lot, but I'd be able to, you know, see if you can maybe get that number down a little bit. I don't want to sit here on the spot and say, you know, do the courtyard and don't get the trellis, but, I mean, I'd be open to the idea of trying to find some savings there, but fundamentally, I think we should move ahead with the project.
I'm in general agreement with that. Among those five, are they all aesthetic, or are there any that would sort of rise to the top of having some additional functional...
The aqua wall is not aesthetic. It would just provide additional functionality in the reading. The sun shade would provide some functionality as well in terms of reducing glare and the reading. There will be shades in there, but that would provide additional screen.
That's helpful information, please.
I'm hearing the consensus is to move forward with the project. So we'll bring this back next meeting with the award of the bid plus the financing conversation.
So I think that we should, this is my opinion, I mean, we just come out of a affordable housing, a housing committee meeting, and we're talking about, you know, numbers that come in here, and then they come in, you know, later, and, you know, there's more money. So I think it makes sense, just from a... Just from a... Not necessarily policy standpoint, but we should, the numbers, we should challenge the number to be better, to be lower, because it's up considerably from our expectations And so until now, we didn't know anything about that. I did not know, you know, I just got back from, you know, we opened up a, spent a little bit of money over in West Asheville to, you know, in Canlin, and it took quite a while to do that, that work. We were very diligent in the amount of money that we spent, we had, but General Services did an amazing job, amazing job, and I think the friends at the library were happy, you know, and I want people to be happy. It's okay with me if they're not ecstatic, okay? It's okay with me if you don't get everything, particularly since we're over. And, I mean, when I look at that, you know, I kind of think that wall's got, we've probably got to do that. Do we really have to do the other things now? But then when you then, which is, it's difficult to have these kind of conversations, when you go, well, it's only $220,000, but could we do a lot with childcare with $220,000? Sure we could. You know, $220,000 is a lot of money, but I don't want to be the villain that says, okay, you got to cut $220,000. So if... But if we can save some money there, I think, I mean, nobody's against that project, I will think, about a year. I'm certainly not. I'm kind of in a little frustrated position since it's coming so high. I agree with all the colleagues, we can't wait. We got to get it done, because it's just going to be even higher. So I'll just throw that out there, so we're not voting on anything right now, so give a look at some of that if you could. Jasmine, you were kind of asking what, you know, in that whole group, we really should be doing, I guess. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, just more information about, I mean, hearing about the wall for instance is really helpful. I'm in the same place, is if there's costs that can be cut without compromising function, that it feels like good stewardship of public funds to do that.
Yeah.
But I don't want to delay before we want to cut the heart of the product.
And the other thing too, now, watch me closely, both sides of my mouth are going to move, okay? Because at the same time, if you really got to have it, it's cheapest to do it. But we need to be convinced, we really got to have these things. It's not just a suggestion, it's not just aesthetics, because, I mean, we're going from a library that was a mess to an amazing structure that's going to benefit the community. But there may be some things in there that we've put in that since we're over budget that we really don't have to have. But if we have to have them, I want to prove it, but I want to know we got to have them.
I agree in moving forward and also looking at some cost-cutting measures. At the same time, though, as we know that folks are not utilizing libraries like they once did, what are the aesthetics that we want to keep to excite people to go to the library? I mean, there for a while, they'll be excited about a new building, but what's going to continue to draw them in on a regular basis? So I don't want us to lose sight of that aspect of the project. We're going to do it. Let's get people in on a regular basis.
All right. Brownie, do you need time since we're on?
Yes, listen, but I think Commissioner Edwards said what I wanted to say. You know, they're going to be excited about the new library and go on. I mean, I know we can't stop. I wish that we had been informed earlier of knowing that was a bid or a estimate instead of a bid. I was on the assumption that that was a bid that we got back a year, year and a half ago, so I know we got to move forward. I think everybody's expressed what they think, we got to move forward, but if there's any way to just slice a little bit of that pie off, I know everyone, I appreciate it.
All right. I think everyone's kind of weighed in. I know it's not super specific feedback, but, you know, I think everyone's really excited about it, about the project. I mean, this is... So thank you for your consideration, whether, maybe this, again, it's not going to change the top line number a lot, but some of the different optional features you showed, if there is, you know, some thoughts about maybe a couple of those to not do at this time, great, but I think the commission wants to move ahead. There are a lot of features in this library that are not typical in other libraries, right, in terms of the amount of community space, things like that. So I think we listened well, and we are investing in a lot of things that, in a lot of ways, do go above and beyond what's a typical library. But again, it's to kind of serve as functions that libraries have now that they didn't use to. So I think those are all, part of what makes this a great project, so... When is this going to come back to be voted on?
We would award a bid next meeting, the 17th.
We'll vote on it the next meeting. All right. All right, thanks for the update. I'm sure you're pleased to talk about a bit. Jeremiah Leroy is going to talk about a potential solar site.
Good afternoon. Just here to give you a brief update about, as you said, a potential site that we're looking into for utility-scale solar. So some of you may know this site already. It's often referred to as the old Chemtronic site in Swanon Noah. It's been around a long time. It's a very large, very unique property in our area. It's about 500 acres. It was formerly a manufacturing facility for some pretty bad stuff, and it was declared a superfund site back in the early 90s, so it's got no plans for future development. It is fairly unique in that at least the front valley of this area is relatively flat, good topography, you know, for our region. So it's a really interesting opportunity for us to look at. Right now, we're just simply in the process of reviewing the site for its potential. So we have sent an initial letter of inquiry to the site owner. That owner did express some interest in at least working with us to determine the viability of potentially moving forward with this site. So we have requested an additional site visit to continue further evaluation. The one thing that the site owner did point out to us is that they have built some pollinator habitats out on this site, and that they want us to be cognizant of that. So we're going to, we plan to map out those pollinator habitats and potentially look to bring in other resources to increase those pollinator habitats if possible, as well as just basically, they're looking for us to create a plan, come to them with what our plan might look like to move forward on a potential solar installation for this site, and then see if we can't work out some sort of agreement with them to, you know, potentially lease the land and then look to develop it. So, you know, at this point, we're really just sort of kicking the tires on this process. There's not a lot really to discuss going forward, but we will continue to update the board as we move forward, and if we're able to come to an agreement with the site owner, we'll come to the board to request approval.
And I need to apologize, because this actually, these slides are actually on our last agenda after the solar RFP discussion. After we voted on it, I was already thinking about the next agenda, so we just moved on. And so we were actually supposed to cover this at the last meeting, and that was my oversight, so sorry about that. Thanks for bringing it back.
No problem.
Okay.
That's it.
So I got one question.
Absolutely.
So in your department, my understanding is what we have an RFP out to look at solar on our buildings.
We will. It's not out yet, but it will, yeah. We came to issue that probably in the next...
So I may not have a concern about this apartment, but I have expressed concern about available land in Bunkin County, and we had someone try to come in and do a major solar, but they were outside, in, I think it was in Swanon Noah. It was on some steep slope, very, very, which would be very concerning to me, you know, removing that, removing the trees and the, and all the undergrowth. I would just be, I would have to look very carefully at the cost. You know, poor management of that can create, you know, some of the messes that's going on in California. I'd be very, very, and I don't know if the county wants to get into that. I mean, again, we have limited space, limited, you know, flatlands, farmlands, and available land, and we have had a couple of, in the last few years, I'm wondering why someone hasn't... I mean, we've done brownfield construction, and I'm wondering, I'm not very familiar with a piece of property, so I'm wondering why we haven't.
So Commissioner, the difference between the brownfields, most of the times you can rehab those and have construction on those. This site is a superfund, there will be no construction on this site, there will be no commercial, no...
Correct. Yes, this was some bad stuff that...
Just pollinator habitats or whatever. Are those bee houses, are you using big words to try to confuse me?
It's basically just planting things like native flowers and things to bring in species like bees and monarch butterflies and things of that nature. Yeah.
And those can cohabitate. We could have the flowers as well as the site for solar, but you could put retail or property on this property.
There was certainly no harm in looking at it, so thanks for bringing it.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, of course, we're excited about the solar RFP, that we're looking forward to getting feedback on that from groups that are interested. But, you know, the part of what the solar RFP shows is that while we should certainly look at our rooftops as locations for solar, you know, we're not going to get to 100% goal just with using our rooftops. Use the amount of real estate that we have, you know, in some of these multi-story buildings, you know, they just don't have big roofs. So we should definitely use them where they're in a physical condition and meet the other criteria for good projects. But we're going to need to do, you know, we're going to need to do rooftops in appropriate locations. I agree, you know, you don't want to be going up on, you know, steep slopes, things like that, and being in the part of the state we're in, you know, we've got a lot of steep slopes. So I think kind of looking at these sites where there's not a lot of other uses of them, and the topography's more moderate, the grid for structures there, you know, these are kind of unique opportunities, so I'm really happy we're taking a look at. Any other...
Sorry, I think one of you said this. What's the acreage again of the site?
It's about 500 acres total. Only a certain portion of that would be usable.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Next up, Josh O'Connor is going to give us an update on the RadTip connector donation and interlocal agreements.
Okay, I believe this one will be brief, as it's a continuation of budget allocation that you did during the previous year. This is just to catch us up on the paperwork to actually... So this is for the RadTip connector. I'll get into the map for a second. RadTip stands for River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. This is the piece that connects our Greenway system to all the work that the city of Asheville is doing along the river. Next slide. Oh, I have to do it, sorry. There we go. So the northern segment of this group, of this section of Greenway that we're asking that the city of Asheville assume design control of starts at Broadway Avenue and goes south to Hill Street, the intersection with 240. We originally conducted a feasibility study on this section of Greenway in 2018. Our conclusions were that this was a relatively expensive section of Greenway to build along the river. We were to partner with NCDOT and use cost-rearing arrangements to make this connection more quickly and much less, much less expensively by creating an on-road connector or on-road connector glorified sidewalk. The city of Asheville would like to pursue a more in-depth plan for Greenway alongside the river, and so we are allocating our grant money to the city of Asheville, and that process is already taking place. And as part of that, we also allocated some $20,000 of match money to the city of Asheville. So the entire grant was $300,000. That was $240,000 of federal highway administration service block transportation grant funding. Match was $60,000 of local match. That money's coming from Bunkin County, which will provide $20,000 to the city of Asheville, which will provide $20,000 and connect Bunkin, the Greenway at the Seagroup. They've already provided $20,000. With your approval, we'll donate the match to the city of Asheville. The city of Asheville will take on the largest part of the responsibility for pursuing this project and the design. Bunkin County will still retain our ability to create a connection between the two Greenway systems, along using a sidewalk connector with NCDOT, and we'll be sharing their costs with them. along using a sidewalk connector with NCDOT and will be sharing their costs with NCDOT while the city works on the design of this Greenway. So, that, if you have any questions that you might have.
So, I want to be clear, because Josh, I think you mentioned that this one is already being allocated in the budget, correct?
Correct.
So, there's no new money that you're looking to allocate, we're just giving it up in the way we're.
So, what was it allocated for, the budget?
It was for this particular use, the $20,000 match to go to city of Asheville. This is just the complexity of interlocal agreement between two government, governing entities. The piece that we've also built into it is should the city of Asheville decide not to enact or exercise this grant, we do get our money back.
All right, Josh, thanks for making that, sounds good. All right, boards and commission policy, and Lamar Oragro, can you take this off the resume?
I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Lamar. As you recall, we had an item that came before you several weeks ago, you mentioned that it should be advertised. At that point, we took the chance, the clerk's office and the manager's office, we took the time to go back and look at other municipalities and other counties and look at what their policies are. And we have a draft for you tonight that Lamar is going to walk you through.
Yeah, in light of some of the concerns and questions about the process, we wanted to kind of shore up the process. We looked at quite a few different counties and cities and tried to make the process a little bit more refined in that we have included a draft of the policy and it is in the policy format that we use for all our policies. As well, I wanted to mention that Stacy Woody, the deputy, is out there as well and she may have some information to add. She did a lot of the lead work and a lot of the research for this. So, if you look and turn to page two, we'll just hit some highlights of some of the aspects of the policy. And if you look to, I'm, I'm starting with 5.1. And it basically says that any citizen of Bunkin County could be on the actual board committees or authorities. And this was kind of refined because I think we did have a question at some point that somebody outside of the county wanted to be on the board. And we wanted to kind of clear this up and make sure that there is no question with that. Even if it is a city board and somebody that we appoint, we want to make sure that our appointee is just within the county of Bunkin. So, that is a 5.1. I want to jump down to 5.3. And it says that no county appointee may serve on no more than two boards. Unless they're exempt by the nature of the position that he or she may hold. And that could be something as far as a board that has to have a finance director or something of that nature on the board as well.
Can I ask one clarification on that?
Sure.
When we say they're not going to serve on more than two boards, that means two county-appointed boards?
Correct.
Might want to just make sure that's, is that, is that clear now or?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one, I think one clarification for dual office holding, that this would not be applicable or just for the board's benefit, it wouldn't be applicable to ex-official positions that this board appointed, like TDA officials too. Because if a member of this board is appointed to afford to serve on behalf of this board, that's part of this board's duty. So, it doesn't count as a second board, as you said, so it's not applicable to that.
Thank you for clarification. And we'll jump to 5.4. And the terms will be limited to two full consecutive terms in any one position. And that's included in there because on an expired position where we reappoint or we appoint somebody for that position, that won't count against that person to have a term limit. So, they may be able to serve more than two terms, but it won't be a full third term. It would be on expiration for whatever the person either resigns or that nature or terminated from the board. And the next highlight was if they miss four consecutive unexcused meetings and fails to attend 75% of the regularly scheduled meetings, that they can be dismissed. He or she may be able to be dismissed from the board. The next aspect of the board is that we would relegate the committee to not have any immediate family member employed by such an agency or department or where appointment could result in financial conflict of interest. We looked at a couple of counties and this was an important part that we didn't have in our policy. And we thought this would be something that would be good to add to that. We wouldn't want to have any conflict of interest. And obviously, we know that there's a conflict, there's a conflict of interest clause for each board where somebody's on the board that they may have to then excuse themselves for voting. But that would be in addition to this, this is being appointed to that board. And, and we definitely can, if we need to have further discussion on this or there is any concern, we definitely could talk about this. And we'll, you have questions in that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that, because the question would be, if you're saying, you know, somebody, somebody wants to apply for a board, that they couldn't be considered if they may have a conflict of interest on some, some matter that could come before the board. We want to, we want to exclude someone even if on 99% of the things that come before the board, there's no financial interest, but they could have that financial interest in something. I don't know, just where do you, where do you draw that line of, because they would have to excuse themselves on any matter where they really do have a financial conflict of interest. I just don't want to, I don't want to make it so broad that we prevent good people from serving on, on boards and commissions just because of situations that might be relatively rare on their service.
So, so to that point, what if you changed the word could to would?
And that is probably more where we're going, it would already be established prior to that for appointment that they would have a conflict of interest. Not, not on a certain aspect that, like you said, 99% of the issues, they wouldn't have a conflict of interest. But going forward, we know ahead of time that there will be a conflict of interest. So, we could, we could change the word to say could.
You're not going to appoint somebody that would have, would have a financial conflict or?
We're good with the questions on that.
Okay, thank you.
And this was important as well, when filling vacancies, we wanted to make sure that we advertise for one month. We also have established, we didn't want to necessarily put this in a policy, but what we're trying to do is update our website where we can go ahead and put the vacancies for a full year out there. So, this would definitely cover that. But in addition to that, we would do additional advertising of the vacancies. So, that is a point of clarification there. But we would want to have the policy state that we were advertised for one month. And there will be an exception to the rule that if the commissioners decide on a replacement or recommendation of an active applicant, they could appoint that person without further notice. And that is just an exception, that doesn't mean it has to be followed. But the board has that leeway where it can make that more of a quick turnaround as far as appointing somebody that has been recommended because somebody was terminated. We will also check the eligibility of all appointees or nominations for a particular position before they come to the board. And like anything, we may miss something, but if we get to the point where, you know, the board rises and says that, you know, can you check this? We can go back and either recheck this information or we can get with the agency that has presented the recommendation. I think that is probably the, the more the highlights as far as this policy is concerned. And we definitely can change anything or tweak anything. This is the draft, I just want to reassure you that this is the draft and it will be up for your consideration whenever you're ready to bring it forward during the meeting. So, Stacy, I don't know if you would like to come up and have anything to add?
Um, we pretty much covered everything, but we did look at other counties like Mecklenburg, Cumberland, New Hanover, Gaston, and the city of Asheville's policies as well. And we tried to take the best from each policy and make sure that it was included in ours.
Do you have any else?
If there are no changes, would you want us to come forward at the next meeting? Did you want some time for the thinking process or?
Let's, let's see if there's any further discussion about it, if we're, we'll see. I, one question, does this, does this policy apply just to the community members that the commission appoints to our boards and commissions? Or does it also apply to the commission itself? Because sometimes we serve on different boards and commissions. So, does it apply to the board of commissioners or just the community members that we appoint to boards and commissions or both?
I defer to Avril. I see she's shaking her head, so.
And I was actually talking to.
It kind of reads like it's meant for the community members, but I just want to make sure, because we do sometimes appoint a commissioner and would all the same kind of rules apply, so to speak.
This was targeted to community, your appointments of community members to certain boards.
Okay, okay.
And we will clap, we can clarify that.
Thank you, that's. We might, yeah, we might want to just kind of put that in there because we do sometimes serve ourselves and we want to make sure this is about when folks apply to be appointed by the board to a county board or commission. Okay, the other question I had was, so let's say we adopt, you know, we adopt these procedures or something like it. How are we going to decide how to appoint those, right? So, there's been some discussion, I think just kind of informally, but we haven't had it here yet, so I want to bring the topic up. Do we want to have a, like a subcommittee of the county commission that works? Because I think we're going to, if we go through this process, we're going to be, I think we're going to get a lot more applicants than we have gotten in the past, but that, I agree, that is, that is a good thing. So, so we're going to have a lot more people to consider. And, and do we want all seven to do every bit of that? Or do we want to form a subcommittee, which can't make decisions, but can kind of, you know, work in a small group to say, let's look at this? Maybe bring some recommendations on some matters that might be considered, you know, consensus or, you know, not controversial. Maybe they would make recommendations that the board would typically accept. Or maybe if it's, you know, some of the boards that really have a lot of, you know, kind of direct decision-making authority, like, you know, planning, planning and zoning, board of adjustments, some of these that, you know, I mean, I'm sure this, for boards like that, my sense is that probably all the commissioners will want to, probably interview candidates and stuff like that. But we may not want to do that for every single applicant, for every single board, just due to the volume of work. So, do we want to have a subcommittee to kind of help work on some of this and bring ideas back to the board? Or do we want all seven of us to be involved in every, you know, every part of that process? Or what are those thoughts?
So, my thought would be that we're changing the policy. I think jumping into the forming of committee is, would be way too quick. I actually think it's going to save, save the commissioners time. I actually think it'll, it'll streamline it, it'll be better. And I think that we just keep bringing them to us under the new policy. And we see how we handle it, if it comes overwhelming, we decide that, we'll do a committee.
You know, I'm, I'm open, like I kind of, I kind of, my hunch is that we're going to need a committee. But we, as Commissioner Beltrick says, we don't have to do that right now. We could kind of, kind of live into it a little bit and see how, see how that works, see how much time is taken for the board. And we, we don't, we don't have to make that decision right now. I tend to think we probably, it probably will be useful to us, but I'm, I'm in no hurry to do it one way or the other.
Yeah, I like Joe's suggestion because it kind of acclimates the full board to the new policy and gives us more of an informed basis to figure out the process from here. So, maybe we could try to say in a couple, you know, after three months of doing this, we'll kind of revisit and see how it's working. I'd like to set some checking point, so we're not kind of.
All right, so we'll maybe we'll do it in evaluation in, early, early next year after three or four months of having a chance to work on it. If we are going to, you know, for the boards where we are going to do interviews, if we are going to kind of say, hey, this is the whole board doing it, then I would really encourage the board to please try to make all those meetings so that, because if some, if only some people interview some people and other people interview others, you know, it's not, it's not really fair to the applicants. So, if we're going to do that, then let's, let's try to be consistent.
I will state further in doing research with interviewing with the board, if, if it's going to be the entire board, it's going to be more than four, or more than three members of the board, it would have to be done in a public setting.
That's right, that's right. So, when we, so when we, when we get to the end of the meeting where we look at the boards and, you know, the applicants, then a lot of people say, hey, yeah, let's interview for these positions or at least, let's at least interview, you know, so-and-so, whoever the board or commissioners want to interview. And then we'll set, we'll set a time to do that, so that'll be, yeah, that'll be a public meeting and all be open.
Yeah, it will be a special meeting.
I mean, I know Brown, Brown remembers that we used to interview, we did a lot of interviews before, a year, several years ago. We interviewed all, it was not uncommon for us to interview. If we had, if there was two and there was four or five, then most of the time we'd end up interviewing the tribe enough of the two.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we, we did discuss this a while back, I discussed it with Heather and we did some research on it. And I know it's been a habit in practice to do interviews differently, but it would be a public meeting, it would be a special meeting, even one of the board members, it doesn't matter if it's three or four. If there's just one or more acting on behalf of the board, then it becomes a subcommittee of the board.
And, and the subcommittee would then be a public body, would then have a different forum number?
Turn your mic on.
Sorry. The subcommittee.
The subcommittee would then become a separate public body, which would have its own number for a forum. So, if there were three on the committee, two would, would be a forum. You would still have to hold the interviews in public.
We're not doing that, at least not, not yet. So, so when we look at applicants, we're going to say, okay, we want to do some interviews, let's do these before our next meeting, for example. Looks, based on how many people we need to interview, let's start at, you know, whatever time of the day. And then we'll just call a special meeting to do that, to do that. The one other just suggestion I would make would be, you know, when we're looking at pools of applicants, if there's a, if there's a board that we want to do interviews on, but if there's a ton of applicants, I don't think we necessarily automatically have to interview everyone. I mean, we might want to say, you know, who here does the board want to interview? My suggestion would be that, that we have, it doesn't have to be a formal policy, but maybe just an understanding that if any member of the commission wants to interview someone, I think we should. You know, so if any, someone's wanting to speak, I'd say, let's make sure we interview so-and-so, then they would be on the list. We don't have to, so we don't have to debate it and vote on it. Like if somebody wants to get it, get them on the interview list, let's, let's just do it. And to make that simple. All right, any other thoughts on this topic before we look? One, maybe one last question, Lamar. So, sometimes existing boards and commissions do make recommendations to us for, for folks who are applying for that. We're going to continue to allow that, right? Or we're not, I mean, of course, we, we can't stop people from doing that. But like, I mean, that's not something that we're either telling people like, please do it or don't do it. Like if folks feel like they want to weigh in, that's something that they're, they're allowed to do, right?
Correct, this policy doesn't change that aspect.
Okay, all right.
Now, we'll need to vote on this policy, right?
We will, so we could do that at our next, we could do that at our next meeting. And, and, and on that last question, we're also not saying to boards and commissions, please give us a recommendation. It's more kind of in the balls of the airport, if they want to do that, they can, but they don't, there's not an expectation that they do that, right? That's better.
It is not an expectation. What we see a lot of times, it depends on how, I guess, how urgent the need for the position is. Sometimes boards are relatively small and have smaller numbers. And in terms of that, a lot of times, they will do some of the footwork and kind of vet some of the people that they want to recommend.
But I want to clarify, sorry. We will still advertise the position, they can send a recommendation in, but this policy says that we will advertise that position, but we will note to you who the recommendation is from that board.
And we have an agenda item tonight with a lot of applicants for the Parks, Greenways and Recreation Advisory Board. Maybe we could just think that through for a second? I know we'll be discussing it tonight, but that process has not followed these guidelines. Was it publicly advertised? Okay. And is there a time sensitivity to those decisions being made?
We could defer to Josh O'Connor and it's his board, I would like for him to come up if he could.
And I'm just asking because it's, it's a new board we're launching, it's going to be a large board, and I just wonder if we might think about passing the policy and then launching and then looking at the board. But if there's some urgency around getting the board in settled and, and in motion.
I think it would be better said if you got the policy in place and tried to make that recommendation, looking at the, the number of candidates that you have. You're going to have to have some selection criteria, you're going down from 25 to nine. And I don't see a way to do that without some kind of follow-up.
And from your perspective, there's no urgency around, the board needs to be settled by X, Y.
There's, there's no time. I'd rather have a solid agreement on who is going to be on that board and how we're moving forward, plus refilling it rather than doing it quickly. So we are getting questions about it, but I'll make sure to communicate that information with the leader.
Are folks to be comfortable with having the opportunity to discuss and vote on this policy and then proceeding with this, with you and this committee?
No, because there's 20.
25 applicants.
Yes, 20 or 25 applicants. Did we, did we say that we were doing these, making sure we had geographic representation on the parks and, is that the one?
Josh, could you just, could you come up and just refresh us on the criteria?
Yeah, we said geographic to make sure, because of the new districts, that they wouldn't all be still, they could not represent.
Listen, Josh, listen.
Correct, you did agree to have three individuals from each of the three districts. We have done some initial mapping. I've not gotten results with each applicant, applicant appointed, but I can tell you that you have a pretty strong core around the city of Asheville, even if they do lie in district ones, so that's still going to be an issue. Unfortunately, I think that's going to be something we struggle with because of the type of people that are going to be interested, all those sporting events and things that would draw them into board participation.
Do, in terms of the, you said you've got a map or is there some, I mean, I'm looking at the list now, there's not a way to, to tell just from looking at, oh wait, I'm sorry, I didn't pan all the way over to the right, never mind, I just answered my question back. Sliding the screen ever so.
Right there, right.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
So we're probably not going to make a decision on this tonight, but why don't, it's on the agenda, why don't we talk about it a little bit more during the regular meeting and kind of figure out what the process we want to go through where that is? But it sounds like it'll be something kind of like what we're going to do with the policy. Thanks, Josh. One, one last comment. In terms of kind of getting the word out about this, Lamar, could I ask that when we, when we get on the agenda to boards and commissions, you know, that for those who are then going into that 30-day period where we're going to, could we have, could we have those listed so that basically like in our meetings, we can say, hey, we are now taking applications for this board and this board so that, you know, this is a great forum to kind of just help get the word out? So if we could just have that published so we could announce that those are being actively solicited at that, that'd be great.
All right, we can do that.
Appreciate it.
All right.
All right, thanks for, thanks for everyone's input on this. That covers everything we had on our agenda. So unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn and we'll be back.
Excuse, can I just state something I think Avril wanted me to remind?
Sure.
As far as the meeting schedule for the 17th of December, we're looking to have a strategic planning at 8:30 that morning. And I think Avril wanted, or we wanted to move the pre-meeting up to 1:00 PM. So Kim, would you like for us to do that?
We'll leave it at 3:00.
For December 17th?
Right, we have the strategic planning session from 8:30 to 12:30 that morning. 8:30 to 12:30?
Long as you feed us.
We can do that. We can stop at McDonald's and get some nuggets.
You get nuggets, you guys are the cheerleaders for this.
All right, strategic planning is from what time to what time?
8:30 to 12:30. And we would have, we'll make sure that's on your calendar.
It's on. Currently, it's 3:00 to whatever, 3:00 to?
So we can take a break and come back at 3:00 for the pre-meeting, all we can do immediately following. That is our ask, what is your preference?
I don't think the pre-meeting, when you go to full time. If it says yes.
Yes, yes, there's several items, they're about to hold up until, so yes.
Um, I find you're one.
Well, fine.
Anybody? Is that helpful? All right. Um, great. And just one other reminder, at our regular meeting tonight, we need to add under new business, the appointment of vice chair. So we need to do that tonight. So when we get there, we will, that'll need to be a consensus, right? Because it's not public to do that. So I hope everyone's for it because there's a statement that says we need to do it. So we're all in a lot of trouble if we don't do it. Okay, all right, thanks for, we'll be back.